Walter, who do we have for the public, sir?
We have two on the board here. Is that Larry?
It's Larry.
All right, Larry. Don't ask me to pronounce your last name.
Mark Sicano.
Okay.
A nice Larry thing. I prepared a statement so I can kind of do this as quickly as I can, stay in a five-minute timeframe here. So, good evening, my name is Larry Mark Sicano. I live at 25 Nutmeg Drive. Some of you know I was employed by the Candlewood Lake Authority for 19 years. The last 14 of those years, I was the executive director, which ended last June. I no longer work for the Lake Authority, and I'm not here on their behalf, but rather here as a concerned resident of this town with intimate knowledge about the politics and now threatening one of our greatest environmental and more importantly, economic assets, that being Candlewood Lake. I'm here to address the comments made by Councilman Semansky in the paper last week. I want it to be clear that my comments have nothing to do with whether or not this council can support the request of the Lake Authority. It has nothing to do with that, but what it does have a lot to do with is publicly, excuse me, politically motivated and disparaging comments meant to discredit the Lake Authority. In the news times last week, it read, "Councilmember Paul Semansky said that, in his view, the reduction is valid because water quality in the lake has not improved." To that, I have four words: Show me your data. It appears to me that the councilman is relying on someone else's talking points rather than reliable information that is out there. For example, in September of 2017, in this volume of Lake and Reservoir Management, an international lake and science management peer-reviewed journal, there was research that was public that took a statistical approach at interpreting data collected on Candlewood from 1985 to 2012. Results from that study showed that the lake's vital signs had been showing signs of improvement. The researchers also concluded that the reasons for the improvement were probably related to the biennial deep drawdown and to lake management efforts. Mr. Semansky also must have not read the recent report or viewed the presentation, both available on the Lake Authority's website, regarding Candlewood Lake on data from 2013 to 2017, which are pretty much just a continuation of the data of the trends that were in that published research report. The news time goes on to quote the councilman saying, "I've seen zero water quality improvement, and I've seen an increase in the algae." I just addressed the water quality improvement, which statistically is improving. With regards to the algae, Mr. Semansky obviously didn't do any homework there either because he would have known that there are lakes, many, many lakes across the state, across the country, across the planet, where there are signs of this improvement, yet they're having more frequent and intense algae blooms. It's something that all lakes are trying to address and trying to understand as best they can. That was also addressed, that fact was also addressed in that report that I mentioned that is on the Lake Authority website. If this was an isolated incident of the councilman not doing his homework, I probably wouldn't be here, but it's not. Only a couple of years ago, he attempted to disparage the Lake Authority during budget deliberations. Allow me to share with you a few, some minutes from March 16th, 2015, budget deliberations in the town of New Milford where it reads, "Mr. Semansky stated a delegate of the Candlewood Lake Authority from another town reached out to him," and in parentheses, he does not know if it's public information, if it's public knowledge, "and told him some unsettling information based on factual information. He agreed to lower, he agreed with a lower appropriation at this time." And that appropriation was lower than what at the time Mayor Pat Werfee had recommended for the Candlewood Lake Authority. There seemed to be a lack of conviction, or courage, or both, since the delegate not from New Milford wasn't mentioned, nor was the unsettling information mentioned in the minutes.
Larry, four minutes. You have the minutes.
Okay. That would come out in April 16th, in the New Milford Republican Town Committee, where during debate with the mayor, it was the data that the Lake Authority had been collecting, and all of a sudden was called under question, which was also shown to be untrue. And you probably may remember when the mayor actually had the letter from the third-party scientist, kind of saying that the Lake Authority was, that the data was world-class data. So, you should be asking yourself, why is Paul doing this to the Lake Authority? I have some interesting ideas on that. I'm not going to share them with you now, but I'd be happy to meet with any of you that are interested in knowing why. And I would just encourage the councilmen who's not here, and anyone else who thinks using the lake for political gain, just don't go there. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Eric.
My name is Eric Gildrick. Eric, give us a minute until we get to the ground.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. My name's Eric Gildrick, out of Sixth South Main Street. Hidden Treasures Park, located at the south end of West Street in New Milford, will afford the public beautiful views and great access to the Usutonic River when it opens. Aside from its quiet seclusion, did you know that Hidden Treasures Park contains another hidden treasure? I am speaking of the site that used to house the old Giddings Mill and later the New Milford Electric Light Company. It is tucked away in the park at the southwest corner, adjacent to what is now the Bleacherie Dam. The beautiful stone building and structures that used to be the site of the New Milford Electric Company are a testament to the ingenuity of the residents of New Milford in the late 19th century. According to the chronology on the New Milford Historical Society's website, Mrs. William D. Black, along with Levi P. Giddings, established an electric light plant on this old mill site in 1884, making New Milford home to one of the earliest electric-producing facilities in the country. That must have been an exciting time for New Milford, as electric lighting literally changed night into day. The rest is history. However, history has not been kind to the New Milford Electric Company building and site. Many of the ancillary structures have disappeared or fallen into disrepair. Within the last few years, the exquisite truss roof of the building has collapsed. It is not too late for the historic preservation of this important structure and site. I respectfully request that the town council approve the grant outlined in item nine of this evening's agenda. Preservation of this site is an important part of New Milford's industrial history and heritage. It must be saved. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
I'll see you on the list, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Walter. Next is Mayor's remarks. So first, I'd like to wish everyone that is celebrating Easter on this Sunday, a happy holy week, and a blessed Easter Sunday. Next, I'd like to hand out to the council. At our last council meeting, we made a motion, it was approved, for a sergeant-at-arms. I'd like to thank Mr. Skelly for being our sergeant, sergeant-at-arms. And this basically just outlines what a sergeant-at-arms does, according to Robert's Rules of Order. And basically, just very quickly, what, so the public itself knows what a sergeant-at-arms does, is a sergeant-at-arms or a warden or a warden officer is sometimes called, who on the floor of the meeting hall assists in preserving order, as the chair may direct. In a convention or large meeting, the officer may have the charge of ushers. We don't have to worry about that, because we don't have those. He may handle certain physical arrangements in the hall as well, such as being responsible in some cases for seeing furnishings are in proper order for each meeting. We have facilities, who does a great job here, so they take care of that. In a legislative or public body that has the power to penalize or compel the attendance of its members, the sergeant-at-arms may have the duty of serving warrants or notices of fines, or of arresting absent members in the event of the call of the house. We do not have that, as our town council, our volunteered members. But what this does state is that our sergeant-at-arms make sure that we follow proper protocol when it comes to how we conduct ourselves with the public. So, Mr. Skelly, I'd like to thank you again for being our sergeant-at-arms.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just one correction, it's S-K-E-L-L-Y. There's no E, so refer to your reading.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skelly. Apologize.
You're welcome. Just making sure.
Yeah. Next, I'd like to congratulate our New Milford High School wrestler, Mel Ortiz. He happened to now be a two-time All-American in wrestling. I think that's a great tribute to both his dedication and both the coaching staff at New Milford High School. So, to Mr. Ortiz, we congratulate you, two-time All-American. What a great achievement.
Wrestling.
Next, I'd like to announce the dates for the Board of Finance meetings. For those that know the process, or don't know the process, is the budget goes from the mayor's recommendation to the town council. The town council then decided on their recommendation and adjustments, it now goes to the Board of Finance. That's how our structure and our charter works. So their meetings are on 4/9 at Serenoble School, and that's where they're going to be hearing from the public as to what they feel the budget should be. Next, they'll go at 4/11 to the E. Paul Martin Room, which is right here. Both, I believe, are at 7:00 PM. Am I right, Diane, is it 7:00 PM for Board of Finance?
Yes.
Okay. So if you'd like to attend those meetings, please do so, they're open to the public. And your input's very important, because it's your town. Next, I'd like to give us an update on our Board of Ed, and some of the opportunities that we've been working with, with the Board of Ed. First is the $700,000 shortfall that we're having this year due to state revenue reductions from the state capital. We've been working just about every 10 days. Greg has been there, Mr. Osipoff, myself, Board of Ed Chair David Lawson, Wendy Follenback, Josh Smith. And basically, we're trying to come up with their revenue numbers that they're going to be giving to town. We're working on those numbers. We've given them a $450,000 number that they're working towards, so that we can have a balanced budget at year-end. Also today, I met with Mr. Osipoff, Mike Zarba from Department of Public Works, Anthony Giovanni, I'm probably pronouncing it wrong, he's their finance director, Kevin Moret, and our finance director, Greg Osipoff. And what we're looking to do is look at long-term capital plan. So there's going to be needs that both the town and the Board of Ed are going to look to do, whether it be boilers that we need, whether it be roofs that we need. These are all capital projects that we have to do. So we're looking at combining forces. One of the things we looked at today is boilers. Are there opportunities, rather than going out to bid on two, to go out to bid on six? Because the town needs them, and the boards need them. We're going to be looking at economies of scale. With economies of scale are going to be savings. So we're looking at boilers. We are looking at roofs. We're looking at any opportunity that combining our buying power results in savings to our taxpayer. I'll be bringing back that information once we get more towards that. Also, to the town council and Board of Finance, we're going to be coming up with our capital plan for long-term, so that they and you, the citizens, can see what our obligations are going to be, both short-term and long-term, so that we can plan properly, so that you then can see what our requirements and necessities are going to be for infrastructure. So I thank our Board of Ed, and I thank Mike Zarba and Mr. Osipoff for attending the meetings and looking to move the town forward. Also in that same vein, we're looking at health insurance. The town and the Board of Ed are on a self-insured plan as it is, but we're looking now at changing the plan, looking at different opportunities to save money. Save money, which then helps offset our taxes and moves the town forward. So we'll be meeting with our insurance carrier. We've already met with Lockton, who's our insurance consultant. We're working on something to give back to our town council and our Board of Finance a couple of months from now, but I'm excited. We've got a lot of people working on that to give us a product that can hopefully save us some money. Third, I'd like to thank the Department of Public Works, the parking rec for snow plowing. So this year, we've had a lot of Nor'easters, as everyone knows, coming pretty much week after week. And I'd like to thank them for being out on the road, taking care of our roads, and doing, providing safety for our citizens. Moms, dads, us, our kids. Lots of storms, they were out at night, and for them, we'd like to thank them for their hard work. Also like to thank the community for coming out and volunteering as they have, for all of our boards and commissions. It's great to see a lot of people calling the mayor's office, saying, "I'd like to participate. I'd like to get involved. I'd like to do, I'd like to do something for our town." So I'm very thankful for our community to continue offering their volunteers their expertise and their knowledge. It makes the process that much better. So for the public, thank you very much. Next, I'd like to let the town council know that our first New Milford Economic Development Corporation meeting will be this Thursday, 8:00 AM, right here at the E. Paul Martin Room. This is something that I talked about when I first took office, that we're going to try and grow our economic base, our commercial base, to help offset taxes. One of the things that we did have about three years ago was an economic development corporation. We're bringing that back. That corporation can help us provide additional financing, additional opportunities through grants and foundations to help our businesses here in New Milford, both that are here now and those that are looking to move here. Next, I'd just like to let the council know that Eversource will be doing transmission flyovers. So if you get calls from your constituents, or you, the constituents of the public, see helicopters flying low, because I know I get calls at the mayor's office, just letting you know that they'll be taking place the week of March 26th through 29th, which is here, and they're going to be reviewing the transmission lines. They're going to take place from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And it's a blue and white helicopter, a blue and silver, and another blue and white. I'm going to be putting the tag numbers on my website, on my Facebook page, so if you'd like to take a look, see if there are these particular vehicles, you know that it's Eversource going around. Also, would like to let you know that there's a meet and greet tomorrow night at 4:00 to 6:00 PM at First and 10 Sports, Sports Bar, and that's for Habitat for Humanity. And Habitat for Humanity, for those who don't know, it's a nonprofit, and what they do is they help those in need become homeowners. So what they're looking for is for volunteers or tradesmen, if you'd like to come down, see what Habitat Humanity has, or if you can offer some of your time and services, I know they greatly appreciate that. That's from 4:00 to 6:00 PM tomorrow at First and 10. And lastly, I'm going to be having my first State of the Town address, which will be this Thursday, 7:00 PM, at the E. Paul Martin Room. Just to let you, the public, know where we are as a town from the first 100 days to where we're going to be going. So I hope you can either attend or watch us live, because we're going to be broadcasting live. So if you can't make it here, you can watch it. And how you can do it is on the town website, you'll be able to click. Diane, if you could kind of chime in a little bit of how we can do that.
On the right-hand side, under the Government landing page, will be a place to click, it says "Live Streaming Video." Just click there, and you'll see a box that'll have the name of the meeting tonight, just so you know we're doing a test run here, and it's working great. Just look downstairs and check, so we're good to go. So you should find it easily if you have any questions. Just give me a buzz if you have to.
Great. So for those that are able to not be here, you can definitely watch it at your leisure or watch it live. So we'd like to thank you. So with that being said, I'd like to, like to move on to the approval of prior minutes.
Shall we move? Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move to the complete streets. I think the council members, did everyone see their memo?
Mm-hmm.
So basically, the complete streets has been withdrawn. So next, I'd like to move to item number six.
A move that we, for the Parks and Recreation, move a request for the 51st Annual Eight-Mile Road Race and the 16th Annual Fair Days 5K on July 28th, 2018, with a start time of 8:30 AM. They'd like road closures as follows. Main Street northbound closed 5:00 AM to 8:35 AM. Main Street southbound closed from 8:40 to 10:30 AM. Elm Street, at the top of the green, closed as needed to allow runners to cross Bennett, which will be closed at the start of the race, and to allow runners to clear about 15 minutes maximum, they'll be closed.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Second, I move for the commission on the arts road closure request for the South Crossover Street adjacent to the bandstand on the town green to be closed. The street would be closed to traffic during the operating hours of the New Milford Art Walk, which is planned for Saturday, August 11th, and Sunday, August 12th, 2018, running from 12:00 PM until 5:00 PM each of those days.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Tax collector, move for the March 2018 refunds in the amount of $4,119.69, leaving a balance of $6,884.18.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, Mr. Osipoff. Update for the Finance.
Good evening. The mayor stole some of my Congress, like to maybe deviate some of my Congress. Perhaps we can culminate our comments in future. Year-to-date February expenses as of 2/28/18, expenditures are 69% of budget, which includes encumbrances of $1,508,108. Excluding encumbrances, the town has expended 65.1% of the budget, which is slightly below where we should be at this time of year on a straight-line basis, or 66.7% of budget. Some of the outliers include trash pickup, unemployment compensation, dispatcher's overtime, winter overtime, which is currently, as of last week, $34,124 over budget, not counting the most recent storm. I spoke to Mike Zarba, and he said there'll probably be several thousand dollars more as a result of the last storm. On the revenue side of the budget, overall, our revenues are at 84.8% of budget. Taxes are at 97.9% collected. As you know, state revenues have been, have been cut and partially offset by the designation of last year's surplus of 1.5 million. The town will achieve savings through attrition of positions in the police department, as well as recent layoffs instituted by the mayor. Both parks and building departments are running below budget, although their busiest season is yet to come. And as the mayor said, we've been meeting with the Board of Ed, and they had their target number, and I ran their year-to-date budget, and they have approximately $2.4 million unexpended or unencumbered at this time. And what the Board of Ed does, that the town doesn't, they encumber all of their salaries for the entire year. So 2.4 is where we're looking for them to achieve $400,000. I identified $55,000 for them as a result of KERMA's, KERMA's Workers Comp Audit. They, we will be receiving a check of $55,000 rebate from KERMA, so I'm counting that towards their contribution. Again, the budget, the mayor gave the dates of the Board of Finance. I also, I met with our banking rep from Webster, and I don't know if you folks know or not, we, there was an attempt at a wire fraud on the town. And I met with our banking rep, and I'm authorizing that an ACH-positive pay be initiated on town accounts, which will avoid the incident of wire fraud. There's also a fraud risk seminar that is being offered by KERMA, which I will be attending along with our comptroller and our IT director. Questions?
You said there was a wire fraud. Did it go through or not?
No, no, it couldn't. The way it happened is somebody phished and got one of my employee's email address and used that to try and initiate a wire to Webster. They're asking that over $600,000 be transferred to Hong Kong, but that's, we would, we would never, we would never initiate a wire transfer via email. We use the web link platform, and it's a dual approval situation, where somebody would initiate the wire and a subsequent individual would release the wire. So it was, I consider an amateurish attempt at, at wire fraud, but nevertheless, it was a attempt. So, you know, based upon our auditors' recommendations, we're going to go to the fraud risk assessment offered by KERMA, and like I said, I'm taking certain steps to try and alleviate those types of incidents.
Any other questions? Mike?
Just a quick question. So the Board of Ed has $2.4 million left over?
In cash, unexpended, unencumbered. Let's see.
And they're, they're looking to spend that money?
Well, I hold all but $400,000. Currently, as of today, I ran this as of today, their year-to-date actual encumbrances, they have about $19 million of encumbrances, and so that leaves about, you know, $2,448,000 unencumbered, unexpended.
Does that include utilities?
There's a multitude of incidents.
Any other questions? Thank you, Greg. Oh, sorry.
So, just to be clear, then, we do not have a commitment from Board of Ed at this point as it relates to their target savings for this current year?
Nothing specific.
So are we going to do any, on the town side, I know you noted our expenditures were under year-to-date on average, is there going to be any consideration for holding some of our capital expenditures this year until we better know what Board of Ed's going to come to the table with?
We could. We have about $320,000 of unexpended capital, so that, that, you know, it's like a safety net, but the town has already met its requirement.
Well, my concern is we're in April almost, and the Board of Ed hasn't committed to their side, so I just want to make sure we're on pace to not have a problem.
Well, again, like I said, they have the $2.4 million that is unexpended and unencumbered. So you would, you would hope that they would be able to identify $400,000 of that for deficit reduction.
And then there was a lot of talk in the newspaper, I think there was a letter to the editor, about us taking, as part of budget motions that were made and approvals for the council deliberations for the budget. They had stated that we were taking $800,000 and putting it in and putting it in contingency, and can you just confirm that that was not the case? We were reducing what we were taking from the unassigned fund?
Yes, that's, that's not, that's not correct. The $800,000 that was reduced was reduced from the fund balance, not contingency.
Yep. There's, there's just a lot of confusion out there, so just wanted everyone to be clear.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Greg?
How fail-safe is the fraud assessment?
I'll tell you once I go to the, to the meeting. I'll, I'll report back, but as I said, I'm bringing our IT director, and hopefully we'll pick up some good information there.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Greg. Next, Grants.
Good evening, council members. I'm Tammy Reardon, the Grants and Compliance Specialist for the town of New Milford. I'm glad to see you here tonight. I am here requesting your resolution authorizing Mayor Pete Bass to execute a grant document that provides senior transportation services throughout our town. The director from the senior center, Carolyn Haglen, was planning on attending with me, but something came up at the last minute, so she's unable to be here. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have as best that I can.
Is this, oh, sorry. Is this an ongoing grant that we apply for every year?
Yes, it is a non-competitive grant. We have received these funds since 2007. It is based on geographic and demographic information, comes from the Department of Transportation, it's a state-matching grant program, and what it provides is it provides for vehicle fuel cost maintenance, as well as the driver's wages and some benefits, and 10% of the administration to provide the coordination of these rides to our seniors and those with disabilities who need transportation.
Okay, so I move that we adopt the resolution pertaining to the, for year 2019, Department of Transportation Matching Grant Program, known as MGP, slash 13B dash 38BB, in the amount of $50,048 for transportation of seniors and persons with disabilities.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you just do the resolution as well?
Right. Okay, we have a resolution authorizing the mayor, Pete Bass, to negotiate and execute all necessary agreement slash contract documents on behalf of the town of New Milford with the Department of Transportation of the state of Connecticut for the Elderly and Disabled Demand Responsive Transportation Expanded Program, and to affix the corporate seal.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Off of the record, I'm Kathy Cassadick, town planner. There's a grant application that actually I identified before Tammy started, so we were all, it's what we applied for last year, and we just figured I would just go ahead and put it together again. It's for $10,000 through First Light, and we're gonna use it in the Hidden Treasures Park area, and as Mr. Wildrick spoke under participation about the building down there that they have identified as being something that might be historical, that should be preserved, we figured if we could use this grant funding to just, it's gotta be something within the project area for, just to figure out what we're dealing with in that building. Is it something that can be renovated? And we did have Malone McBroom walk out there with us a few months back, and they identified that these old pump house buildings could have contaminants in them, and that it should have, it has hazardous materials assessment of the building. So that's what we were trying to do with this, these funds, and also some safety signage for the, the future park.
Any discussion?
So the signage is just safety-related, not for the park itself, because Mr. Calhoun stated at the budget hearings that he recommended reduction of a maintainer, because he would not have to maintain the Hidden Treasures Park next year, so I just wanna confirm.
I think on that part, that's the, the committee's working more on that part of it. They had some additional funds, she thought, from the $45,000 that the commit, that the town council already appropriated, and some of that, she felt, could be used for that first year's maintenance. That's what the committee was doing with that.
Well, I would, I trust that the committee would come to the council before they expend those funds that was not approved for the maintenance?
I can at least know that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're, they're applying for the applications to, I know, to zoning and wellings right now, too.
Yeah, I mean, when, we, we had a specific discussion back in, I think it was October 10th of 2000, last year, the, the money wasn't to be used for maintenance, it was to be used for specific purposes, and that's what was voted on and approved. It was not approved to be expended for maintenance.
Yeah, they've been, I can tell the committee that they should come back to you guys. I haven't been that, as, as much involved with them. They're handling all their stuff.
Yeah, I remember there was a healthy discussion on that, and it.
We'll see if they come to the next meeting.
Okay.
Thanks, Kathy.
Full.
Kathy, this is just for the pump house. What about the water tower?
If there's enough funds, we had been given a price of $8,500 to do the hazardous materials assessment, and I believe some of the water tower was also covered. It's kinda, their general estimate was a little bit vague, but I think that they can also cover the water tower.
Because the water tower may really be a problem.
Well, we went out there a few months back, and we identified that the water tower is empty. You can see it, there's no water left in there, there's nothing.
Oh, it's empty?
It's empty, yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, that, that's a different story.
There was, we were all surprised, we went up to it and looked at it, and there was a little hole, it had been, it was drained at some point, but.
Wow. Magic. Thank you, Kathy.
So I move for authorization allowing the town to apply to the Husetonic River Project Fund for a grant in the amount of $10,000 to be used to perform a hazardous building material study at the pump house structure at Hidden Treasure Park site, and to be used to prepare a plan and a budget for remediation, reuse, and/or preservation of the pump house structure, and to be used for signage at Hidden Treasure Park.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion to call a special town meeting for 6:00 p.m. on April the 9th, 2018, the E. Palmer Room in New Milford Town Hall, 10 Main Street, New Milford, Connecticut, for the purpose of considering a resolution for the planning, acquisition, and construction of road improvements, 2018, 2019, and authorizing the issue of $6 million in bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose. Uh, just a note, said resolution was recommended by the town council on March 12th and approved by the Board of Finance on March 19th.
Third.
Any discussion?
So, I think you said the Board of Finance meeting at Serenoble, the public hearing, is also April night? Do we want to, do people have to choose between the two? Should we pick a different date?
So is your council.
Our council meets the same day. So theirs is at seven?
The Board of Finance is next day also, though.
So there's, this is it.
I was attracted to that day.
It's an hour before both meetings.
This is at six, so if someone wanted to, they could go there at seven.
All right. Just wanted to throw that out there.
We're staying here at seven.
Yep.
All right.
I need a clothing machine. The, to be streamed live, though, you can watch one while you're at the other.
So just to be clear, we're gonna have the special town meeting at six, and then the regular at seven?
Have our council meeting an hour later, yes.
Any discussion? More? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Appointments and reappointments for boards, commissions, committees. We move for the Film Commission, the appointment of Joel S. Levitt, Democrat, term to run from March 26, 2018, through November 30, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Move the Arbor Tree Subcommittee for the appointment of Sean R. Emmons, independent. They will all be the same duration, I'll read that at the end if you don't mind. Appointment of Sean R. Emmons, independent, or appointment of Shane Newman, unaffiliated. Appointment of Christopher A. Bruzy, Republican. Appointment of Barbara Blair Canary, Republican. Appointment of Catherine A. Francis, Republican. Terms for all to be from March 26, 2018, through September the 10th, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? Full.
Yeah, my understanding is that Jeff Stevens from Meadowbrook, who doesn't live in town, is volunteering to help as well, so the minutes could just note that we appreciate the fact that technically he can't be on the committee, but he's willing to volunteer because he owns a business in town that we appreciate.
And we definitely appreciate it.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion? Walter?
All these years, is that really your name, Catherine? All these years?
Yeah. You can use it if you want.
Thanks, Katie.
You can use it if you want.
A fellow Mount Neers, and now we find out your name is Catherine?
I'm sorry, Walter.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Uh, move for the Athletic and Recreational Fields Subcommittee. All appointments will run from March 26, 2018, through September 10, 2018. Appointment of Gregory M. Marsan, unaffiliated. Appointment of Thomas L. Pillow, Republican. Peter M. Wilken, Jr., unaffiliated. Robert John Beebe III, unaffiliated. Angela Chastain, Republican. Scott Wetmore, Democrat. And Joseph Wonderlick, unaffiliated.
And just if I could state something, Mr. Wonderlick wasn't on this agenda. This was recommended by Councilman Mike Nahom. I was able to get ahold of Mr. Wonderlick yesterday, and for those that don't know him, he's heavily involved in the soccer community, youth soccer, and he wanted to just make sure that, you know, he would like to be involved, so.
Any discussion? Full.
Yeah, just if, if there's anyone else that, I mean, just because I know so many people in the sport community, it comes up to me, is that, is this a list that can grow, or is this structured with just the six?
I think the six to start, and if there's a need, yeah. If people wanna come and help, or sorry, seven, if they wanna come and help participate, they can do so.
I could always add advisory members.
Exactly.
Just voting members.
As long as they have a title, we're happy.
There you go, advisory members.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Uh, move that the town council move, enter into executive session with respect to strategy and our negotiations with respect to, do I have to read these?
Yep.
Uh, Michelle Legori, Michael Legori, excuse me, et al. v. New Milford, docket number DBD dash CV dash 17, 6022564 dash S, in Danbury Superior Court. Item two, Michael Barnes, on behalf of the town of New Milford, et al., v. David Gronback, et al., docket number LLICV17 dash 5008399 dash S, in Litchfield Superior Court.
Can we invite in the town attorney?
We'd like to invite in the town attorney.
Matt Grimes.
Matthew Grimes.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, we're back, and we're just letting the public know that we came out of executive session. No motions, no votes were taken.
Who made the motion to come out of executive session?
To have a motion to come out of executive session.
Remove.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Ms. Francis?
Okay, I'd like to spend the rules to add two items to the agenda. Item 13, consideration of a legal settlement, and item 14, consideration of the town attorney's opinion regarding the Board of Finance Authority and Landfill Settlement Fund.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Like to move to approve the settlement in Michael Legori, et al., v. New Milford, docket number DBD dash CV dash 17 dash 6022564 dash S, pursuant to the mediation held March 14th, 2018, in Danbury Superior Court.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Like to move that the January 9th, 2017, letter from John Tower to David Gronback and the White Paper Regarding Use of the Landfill Settlement Fund dated October 21st, 2016, by W. Lee Palmer, be declared null and void pursuant to the town attorney's recommendation dated March 23rd, 2018, and for the reasons set forth therein.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.